Please let's take our seats.
Okay, Happy New Year to everyone. We're gonna have the invocation from Minister Carla Davis, Center of Prayer, Fayetteville, Georgia, be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand with me.
Good evening and Happy New Year to you once again. Thank you for the opportunity to lead you in a word of prayer. Can we bow our heads, please? Father God, in the name of Jesus, we just thank you for this opportunity to join together for this session once again. We ask that you just give wisdom and knowledge to each one of these commissioners and each issue that is laid before the table. We ask that you would give us a know-how, a sensitivity, patience, to be able to make decisions for this county that will uplift the people, that will make the young people stronger, that will make the community greater than it's ever been. Thank you for this opportunity on this day. We acknowledge your presence in this place, in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and Happy New Year to everyone. This is the January 5th, 2016 Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Does any member want to offer any amendments?
Yes, I have two I would like to see removed. The first one's Resolution 2016-13, which deals with the police department and sale of firearms somewhere around here, trading five glocks. They're doing some more additional research on it and ask that this be held. Is there a second on this motion?
Second.
Probably move them second, those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose. Is unanimous. My second request would be, is by the Senior Services Director, to delete, to remove item number two under Ms. Bright Human Resources's request to delete the position of Health and Wellness Coordinator. Is there a second on it?
Second.
Probably move them second, those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose. Is unanimous. Any others?
Hearing none, may we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the approved amendments?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the agenda with the approved amendments.
Second, it probably moved in second, those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose. Is unanimous.
Approval of the December 15, 2015 Regular Business Meeting Minutes.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Regular Business Meeting Minutes from December 15, 2015.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move them second, those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose. Is unanimous.
We will not have public comment. Mr. Chairman, we do have citizens that have signed up to speak before the Board. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record, speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the Board.
Judge Al Collier.
Good evening. How are y'all doing tonight?
Good evening.
Good. I'm here today to speak on Resolution 7. That is asking you to support House Bill Number 464, that has currently passed the House and is presently in the Senate. Now, that occurred last year. And it sort of happened was, we went to the Legislative Delegation, asked them to increase our supplement, and it told them at that time, this was something that had to come from them. And it was by law, we looked at the law and found, actually we looked at the law, you know, and found out that the county commission cannot increase our supplement. And so because of that, it was done through the Legislative Delegation. Well, it made it through the House and got bogged down in the Senate and wasn't able to get to the end of the session. This is a carryover session. So because of that, we have, it's now still pending in the Senate. When we met the Legislative Delegation this year, their response to me was, "Oh, did you get the Commissioner's approval?" Be honest with you, I don't think your approval is required. But because they have requested it, because we want to move the bill, obviously, that's why we're seeking legislative resolution approving the bill. It's been 10 years since we've received a supplement increase. That's why we're asking for one now. Other county employees received one several years ago. We did not receive anything of that time. There was an increase that was passed during the previous administration, both in Chairman and Governor, but the previous Governor vetoed it at the request of the previous Chairman. So there's what was something that was moved through and did not make it through. You know, what we're trying to do is, we are trying to have our salary increased. We want to have quality people in the position of Superior Court Judge. And now, and here's my, one of the things that that means is that we're having, we're seeking to have a lot of candidates run for Superior Court Judge. There may be one sitting there that would rather have fewer candidates running for Superior Court Judge, but still, that's what our goal is, to have quality people there, and that's why we want the increase. You know, within the next three years, we are going to be losing 70, over 70 years of judicial experience. At the end of this year, we're having two retire. At the end of three years, in three years, we're going to have another one that's going to be retiring. And so that's why we think it is important to have the salary to the point where we feel like that it would be beneficial for quality people to be in that job. We would ask for your support of Resolution Number 7. Thank you.
Carl Swenson.
Carl Swenson with the Clayton County Citizens Oversight Committee. I currently live in Henry County. I hope all of you had a Happy New Year and a joyous holiday. I'm here today because of a problem that I see that is going to be affecting all of the, or at least half of the police department here in Clayton County. After talking to a few of them outside, it seems that roughly half of the police officers there have less than two years of experience. And as was talked about recently, we had an incident on March 15th of 2015 wherein a young officer was killed in the line of duty. And it became a problem because of what was issued in the form of a death certificate. Now, when this officer is responding to a 911 call in a police vehicle, and all the reports of the times say he's on duty, one would expect that the death certificate would reflect that, which it did not and does not. And it also does not reflect the fact that when his car hit that tree, that that was something other than natural causes. Now, for this to happen, for those two areas to be wrong on this death certificate, there has to be a reason for that. That reason can only come from the insurance problems that this county is having. I looked into a settlement that was reached here recently about Britney Cousins, and I can find no documentation. It's like it was hidden from the public view and remains hidden. Can't find anything on it. But a settlement was reached nonetheless. Is this because of the insurance? I think so. And the same thing applies to the death of Officer Wallace on the 15th of March. Now, why the hesitation? Doesn't matter. But I can tell you that last time I checked, putting forth public documents that are lies, basically, is perjury. And when two or more people conspire to commit perjury, we have something called a RICO Act. Now, this has been going on for seven months, eight months, whatever it is, nine months, and nothing has been done. And yet, all these young officers out there could suffer the same fate, meaning their families would be unprotected. Why? Because there is no insurance to cover it. And why, when I ask for a certificate of insurance, do I get one back that says you have no insurance on a fleet of 1,395 vehicles? I asked for a true and accurate copy, and I assume that was true and accurate. So if that was true and accurate, that means none of the county vehicles are covered.
Mr. Chairman, that's the three-second warning of the timer that we have over here to the right. Mr. Swenson's time has expired.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson.
I have more for you.
I'm sure you do. Thank you. Quinn Howard.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy New Year to all.
Happy New Year.
My name is Quinn Howard, and I am a resident of Clayton County. As you all know, you've seen me here now for a year. Please, ma'am, please, sir, time is of the essence. January the 5th is today. Volunteer Tax Services Program starts the end of January, the last Saturday in this month. If you can just find it in your hearts to allow us to be back in the Clayton County Headquarters Library this year, and then if we cannot continue, I would ask if you would please, ma'am, please, sir, maybe find another location next year. But once again, because I've been coming, and the software is out there, the numbers are out there, and the address is out there. So if you all could please, please, allow me to be back in Clayton County Headquarters Library, and it's only on Saturdays. It's from the end, the last Saturday in January until April, actually, it's April the 18th because they're giving us an extension date. But I would just ask until April the 16th, and I'm there from 9:00 to 4:00, because I try to wrap it up to be out of there by 5:00. And that's all I'm asking. If you all could please agree to do that. I've had several, several calls, several people have called me, that has called the library, and especially my older people. My elderly people, they are out there 5:00 in the morning, waiting in line to be serviced. And that's all I'm asking. It is a free, it is a volunteer income tax assistance program, where we've been there for many, many years. And I just appreciate your kindness. I appreciate your support, and I thank you very much for taking this time to listen. Thank you.
Thank you.
This concludes public comment. The Board will now have proclamation whereby Clayton County recognizes Ms. Yolanda Darden Buford for her service to Clayton County, as presented by Chairman Turner. Is Ms. Buford present here?
Please come forward, Ms. Buford. Now she's coming, and I'm gonna take this opportunity to say on behalf of the Board and the business community of Clayton County that we appreciate your service. You've always been engaged. You've always been an asset to this county, and we are truly, truly thankful for your service so much. Please.
And if the members of the Board could rise from their respective seats and join Ms. Buford for the presentation. If you have any family or friends present, they may come forward as well.
And let me just say that she is, she is the President of the Chamber of Commerce of Clayton County, has done a tremendous job, and she is going to a new endeavor, starting, I guess she's already started. So, all right.
And the proclamation reads, Clayton County honors Yolanda Darden Buford for her service to Clayton County. Whereas, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners is honored to congratulate Yolanda Darden Buford for her outstanding service of 10 years with the Clayton County Chamber of Commerce. And whereas, Yolanda Darden Buford has worked for the Clayton County Chamber of Commerce since 2005, and has served as President and CEO since August 2008. She formally served as the Chamber's Vice President. And whereas, prior to joining the Clayton County Chamber, she was Director of Membership with the Hanson Rhodes Chamber of Commerce in Norfolk, Virginia, and Executive Director with the Greater Miami Chamber of Commerce in Miami, Florida. And whereas, in July 2015, Yolanda received the Georgia Certified Chamber Executive Designation from the Georgia Association of Chamber of Commerce Executives. She is a 2014 graduate of the U.S. Chamber of Commerce Institute for Organization Management, and served as a Class Advisor for the 2015 Southeast Institute Program. And whereas, Yolanda has continuously displayed exceptional service and professionalism through her commitment to the Clayton County Chamber of Commerce. She is a true asset to Clayton County and will continue to make a lasting impression. And whereas, Yolanda has provided invaluable service to Clayton County, and the entire Board of Commissioners congratulate her as she begins a new professional journey as Vice President of Economic Development and External Affairs at Atlanta Technical College. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby call on all citizens to recognize and honor Yolanda Darden Buford for her outstanding service of 10 years with the Clayton County Chamber of Commerce. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 5th day of January in the year 2016. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman.
The Board will now hear a presentation whereby, whereby severe weather task force update. That's going to be presented by Fire Chief, EMA Director, Landry Murkison.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I will go fast and be brief. So please, if you have questions, stop me at any given time. What I want to do is, is kind of give you a brief update on the last severe weather task force meeting that we held here in the county. Many of you remember, two years ago, upon making chief, I assembled a group of county leaders that basically comprises every county agency, in which we get together and talk about what challenges we're facing based off of the weather patterns that are being predicted for the upcoming severe weather season. This season is particularly interesting as we're facing probably one of the biggest El Ninos that we've ever seen, and it continues to grow in size as we go. So, real briefly, what is an El Nino? Basically, what happens is, when the sea surface temps out in the Pacific get warmer than usual, we have what's called an El Nino. That's what we're facing right now, and that's what's causing the severe weather, the rains that we've had, the severe flooding that we've had. And this storm actually continues to grow month by month. So, when you look at these two pictures right here, what you're seeing, the image on the left shows the largest El Nino on record, which occurred back in 1997. That's when we witnessed large ice storms, snow storms, we had severe weather, tornadoes, flooding, all of that occurred back in 1997, and then through March of 1998, when a tornado ripped through Dunwoody, killing several people and causing millions in damage. The image on the right shows you the El Nino that's developing currently as we speak. So you can see it is substantially larger and more intense in size, and that's what's driving all of the weather that we've seen over the Thanksgiving holidays, the Christmas holidays, in which we experienced record rainfall. The same storm brought 11 inches of rain to Texas in one day. So that's kind of what it is that we're dealing with as we begin to move forward. So some of the strongest El Nino periods since 1950, significant flooding in March of 98, that's the one that we were just looking at from the strongest on record before. The snowiest winter on record occurred with Columbus and Macon in '72 and '73, which Atlanta had its first crippling ice storm in January of that year. Busy severe seasons in both spring of 98 included a Gainesville F3 tornado in March, and then in spring of '73 also, we witnessed significant damages. But what has this storm done to date? So far, just a few statistics of what the current El Nino has done. They named the last winter storm, which occurred in the month of December, Winter Storm Goliath, which produced the deadliest December that the states have seen since 1953. That storm started in the west, which covered the west in snow and ice, moved into the Midwest, causing blizzard conditions and flooding. Phase 3 of that storm, which is what hit the south with heavy rain and flooding. December 23rd alone, that storm spawned 28 tornadoes. They had six consecutive days of tornadoes, 51 tornadoes altogether. Five were deemed killers by the National Weather Service, causing over 20 deaths. Two reached an EF4 status, and a tornado on December 3rd had a documented track of over 145 mile long, which was a record for a tornado to stay on the ground. So what we're dealing with and what we're seeing is a storm that we have not yet seen or dealt with. So the question becomes is, how is it going to impact our weather moving forward? So when you look at a typical El Nino weather pattern, it sets up just like every other weather pattern that we see during the winter. We typically have cooler weather, the subtropical jet stream coming out of the Mexicos, and now the Gulf of Mexico brings that moisture up. We may get a little snow, maybe a little ice. We may get nothing, maybe a little dusting. However, what we're beginning to see and what the prediction is going to be moving forward, and several things that can affect this, is what happens at the polar ice caps. So, right now, what's causing this Arctic blast that's coming down right now is a weaker high located at the polar ice caps. If that continues, and the weather pattern continues, and we continue to get the moisture coming up out of the Gulf, then what we're looking at in February, March are record icefalls, record snowfalls, and a winter probably two to three times worse than what we experienced with the ice storms of two years ago, which simply I don't think anybody's prepared to handle. If we don't get that, we get the stronger high than what we're going to be facing, is more torrential rain, more flooding, mixed in with a few tornadoes, which the ground level and the water table is already so high that that will cause continued flooding, which will cause a different story. So, not a real pretty picture moving forward as we get into January, February, and March, which are typically our severe weather seasons, but it's not a matter of what we get, it's a matter of what type we get and how bad it's going to be. So as we look at it, this is what's currently hitting our area now with this last dip of Arctic blast that's come down. If this pattern continues, that's what will produce the high levels of ice and snow as we get into late February, early March, and they're predicting it could hang on through parts of April, and maybe even into May. Just depends on how strong that El Nino gets and when it starts to taper off. Typically, they last anywhere between six to nine months, once they start developing. So it's a storm that's going to stick around for quite some time, once it gets here. So what we're looking at right now is all of the models coming out of the Climate Prediction Centers send one pretty clear signal, it's going to be wetter than normal in the southeastern United States. The only question becomes is, is it going to be colder than normal, or will we see unseasonably warm temperatures, which is what will spawn the severe weather? So what are our challenges? GDOT has made several changes to how they are preparing to handle the upcoming winter weather. A lot of this is in response to the gridlock that happened in Atlanta, the last ice storm, which we were able to escape. However, a lot of the trucking associations and everything, I guess, got upset because Atlanta was shut down, trucks couldn't get through. Okay, so in your package, I've included some maps for you. The first map is basically going to show you their winter weather interstate brine teams. Brine got all the praise on the news. It's a pre-treatment salt and water mixture that they lay down before the storm even, even comes. The purpose of it is, they coat the roadways. As the ice and snow falls, it interacts with the brine, melts it, no problem. Some of the stuff you saw on the interstates, you have one lane north, one lane south that was open. Those were ones that were pre-treated with brine. As you can see from this map, GDOT will touch nothing but interstates, and they will only hit the main interstates. So any of the state thoroughfares, Terra Boulevard, 138, Highway 54, the main ones that run through Clayton County, they're not going to touch them. So that responsibility is going to fall back on the county to keep those open and passable. Once the weather event hits, if the brine is not working, the next map shows you their weather interstate teams. These are de-icing, so this is the sand, the salt, the gravel, trucks that will be flowing. It's the same setup as it is with the de-icing with the pre-treating. They're only going to hit the interstates, and they'll come as far south as they need to, but they will not hit any of the state routes that are on our local highways. The next slide is their multi-agency traffic strike teams. So these are the teams that are going to be sent out to clear traffic jams, abandoned motorists, abandoned vehicles, whatever the case may be. So what has that done for us? Basically, what it's done is it's, if we look at the warmer event, we're going to have continual flooding, and a lot of our concerns are the same, whether it's continual flooding or whether it's ice and snow, our infrastructure simply won't handle any more water. So any more rain or flooding that comes down, trees will start to fall if the winds get up. If they're coated in ice, they'll come down even quicker. So we do expect some sort of damage that way. Expanded responsibilities for handling icy road conditions. We're very limited in the number of crews we have that can go out and treat our roadways. With the additional impact of having to handle the state thoroughfares now as well, that will further increase the pressure that gets put on those road crews. And the simple fact is, we don't have a facility to store bulk sand, gravel, and salt. So we store a limited amount over at T&amp;D's facility, so we're in need of some sort of structure to where we can bulk store sand, salt, and gravel, so that we can keep up with the demand. The last two storms, we were very successful, and being able to get with GDOT, go into their lots and getting some material, we don't think that's going to be an option moving forward. They've kind of shut down a lot of those, those resources, and everything is being funneled into the interstates. So, basically, what it is that we're going to be looking for in the immediacy would be consensus from the Board to try and locate some temporary warehousing, so that we can start to order bulk sand, gravel, and salt from suppliers and get it in here ahead of the winter storms. For future, we would like to construct a facility similar to what you see here for long-term storage of bulk ice and salt and sand mixture here in the county. So that's everything in a really, really fast nutshell. So I'll open it up to questions from the Board and any further specifics that y'all may need.
Any questions, Biden Board members?
Yes.
Commissioner Abbott.
Does Clayton County, or do we have any of this brine, I guess you'd call it, that the state has for the interstates?
No, ma'am. We do not. The state has it, and the process to actually make it is not complicated. However, the machinery is expensive. So I think estimates by Director Matarco, just the machinery to conduct the process is around $150,000 for the machinery to do it, and then it's a matter of being able to get the material and having a dry place to store it, so you can manufacture it and make it. It's not, it's not a hard process, it just takes the money to have the equipment to do it.
What's your timetable on what we need to do, or what you all need to do in order to be ahead of the storm? It's January 5th now.
Yes, ma'am. It's coming fast. So, you know, kind of what, what we're asking for permission to do is locate some temporary warehousing space that we can bring back to the Board, which will provide us a temporary storage location for bulk sand, gravel, and salt. If that approval is given, myself and Director Matarco will start that process in the morning. Just trying to locate somewhere that would be centrally located where we can bulk store it. A facility like I showed you would increase our capacity 11-fold over what we have now. The problem is, you know, even if we agreed to build this structure tonight and said, "Okay, go find a company who can just do it," nobody can get it built before the winter storms are here. You know, trying to pour concrete and the rain and the snow simply isn't going to work. So we're looking for a temporary solution for this year, just so we can start the process of bulk storing. The other issue we're going to have, if we don't locate storage space quickly so we can start the procurement process, is all this salt is coming from the north. So once they can't get it down here, it's all a moot point. So we're going to move as, as fast as we can to try and get those, that bulk material here. We just got to have somewhere dry to put it.
Do you have an idea or a location?
Do you have an idea or a location for the temporaries?
We would try to go find a vacant logistics warehouse that's somewhere centrally located, maybe in the Morrow area, some of the vacant warehouses, right around there. You know, since GDOT's going to be nice enough to hit the interstates, we may be able to find one close to an interstate, which hopefully is nice and passable. We want to try and keep it centrally located to reduce travel time for Director Matarco's teams, so they can get reloaded quickly and then be able to distribute.
All right, well, with that being said, is there any opposition from a board member to give the chief and his staff consensus to go forth and look for a temporary housing?
Well, I have a follow-up question. The consensus to go forward would suggest that if you locate one, you're going to come back before us and ask for the financing and the contract approval and things. Is there an expediency of time, and the storms are coming upon us? Is there a budget that we should consider from general fund or some sort of emergency I mean, if it's coming down, and if it's going to happen anyways, and we're probably going to do it anyways, what range are we talking about? Can we pre-approve something to get started, starting your negotiations for rent or whatever, in order to move this forward a little faster? Pre-approve the purchase of brine if we find a location or whatever?
Commissioner Emerson, we all spoke with chief about this before the holidays, excuse me, and there is some funding that we have that we could use to take care of the facility and assist with that. But we would just have to bring it back to the board in the form of a budget amendment at that time. I guess if you did, gave us a consensus, we can maybe do an emergency purchase? We could do an emergency purchase and then bring the budget amendment to the board.
So we need to give consensus to go forward with the site location and the material purchase, as well as a emergency purchase authorization?
But the question that Commissioner Emerson asked, how much? What's the budget?
We discussed about $100,000 is the number that we had talked about before Christmas.
For the storage, for the temporary storage?
That was for everything.
Materials?
Not knowing what the bulk material costs, when we spoke before the holidays, we were mainly looking for storage area. You know, we'll have to get in touch with Director Matarco and his suppliers to see exactly what those materials are going for by the ton, I'm assuming, is that how you purchase them? And those are things that we don't currently have ongoing contracts for, so that's where the emergency purchase would come into play.
You wouldn't know where the rental fees are either.
Right, that's correct, so.
You need to go for it, really without us putting a cart before the horse, you need to do your research.
Right.
And then bring it back to us.
Yes, sir.
And we can do emergency purchase as needed if something should hit us before time. So, again, just to move forward with doing the research on it, is everybody all right with them doing that?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, I give consensus.
You have it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the presentation.
Can I ask a follow-up question, maybe Mr. Matarco? I mean for it to sound silly, but we've got how much sand at the International Park? I said it's not, seriously, I mean, we got a lot of sand over there, right? And we just replaced it during the Hunger Games thing a few years ago, so, you know, if it's coming down from the north and there's a premium, because everybody wants it, is that something we can use now?
It's not the same material.
I mean, if we had to, I mean, it's sitting there, right? It's off-season. Fair question.
It has been discussed, and a couple of years ago, we did take a couple loads from there. Sand won't get you so far, you need the salt to go with it, but we do have a supply, and to be spread, it has to be dry. If it gets wet and gets frozen, it won't spread. So there's logistical issues with it, that's why you have the storage containers with ruse on them, so.
Even for the sand and the gravel? All right, thank you for that.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir.
The board will now consider the request of Deborah Brewer, Director of Central Services.
Mr. Chairman, can we hear item number three, RFP 1461 separately, please?
Take item three, take first two together.
Okay. Good evening. The first item is a recommendation to approve the purchase of XP-26 tasers and accessories for the Clayton County Police Department from Taser International, located in Scottsdale, Arizona, in the amount of $66,616.73. As a sole source award, funding is available through the Police Department Other Minor Equipment Funds, the department's recommendation, the vendor's sole source letter and agreement, and the vendor pricing schedule are attached to the memorandum for your review and information. The second is a recommendation for a sole source award for an annual subscription from Power DMS, located in Orlando, Florida, in the amount of $11,878.17 for the Police Department's Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, short, KALIA for short. Funding is available through the Police Department's General Funds, the department's recommendation, vendor quote, and agreement, and sole source letter are attached to the memorandum for your review and information. The request is for you to approve the recommendations authorized as chairman or his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contracts, and to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motions, there a second.
I'll second it.
Probably move to second, any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, unanimous.
The next item is a request to amend the current contract with ENA Incorporated doing business with NECO, located in Johnsboro, Georgia, to correct the term, scope of services, and compensation to reflect the receipt of funding, grant funding, or funding in the amount of $100,000 for the new grant period. This contract is for the provision of diversion services for juveniles coming under the jurisdiction of the Clayton County Juvenile Court. Funding is available through the Juvenile Court Services Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Grant. The department's recommendation amendment and consent agreement and quote excerpt from RFP 1461 are attached for your review and information. The request is for you to approve the recommendation authorized as chairman or his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Probably move to second, are there any questions? Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Nay.
Three, the two it fails.
Two to three.
I said two to three.
Oh, I thought you said three to two.
No, two to three it fails.
The board will consider the request of Renee Bright, Human Resources Director.
I have one item tonight. It's a request from the sheriff's office to correct the reorganization that was previously approved by the board. On November 3, the sheriff's office requested a reorganization that included the elimination of a lieutenant's position. The request should have been for the work release coordinator position. Both positions are a pay grade 26, there's no additional impact on the budget, and this is simply to correct the record.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motions, there a second?
I'll second it.
Probably move to second, any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous.
Thank you.
The board will now hear the request of Kristy Barnes, Chief Staff Attorney.
Ms. Barnes, take Resolution 2016-5 separately.
And seven. Good evening, Happy New Year. First is Resolution Number 2016-1, which is a resolution providing for the designation of persons authorized to sign checks on the bank accounts of Clayton County to authorize the clerk to furnish the depositories of Clayton County public funds with a copy of this resolution, together with the required specimen signatures, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution Number 2016-2 is a resolution prescribing the depositories of public funds for Clayton County. Resolution Number 2016-3 is a resolution providing for the authorization of the chief financial officer to deposit Clayton County funds into the local government investment pool, to authorize the chairman and the financial officer to execute any document necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution Number 2016-4 is a resolution providing for the designation of persons authorized to sign checks on a bank account of Clayton County, specifically the Witness Transportation Arrangements account, to authorize the clerk to furnish the depositories of Clayton County public funds with a copy of this resolution, together with the required specimen signatures, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution Number, excuse me, 2016-6, which you should have a revised draft, is a resolution providing for the establishment and publication of qualifying fees for each county office to be filled in the upcoming primary and general election, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution Number 2016-8 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to accept forfeited vehicles from Clayton County Police Department drug investigations, to authorize the sale of such property in a manner as will be in the best interest of the county, to provide for the dispersal of sale proceeds, and this is a 2002 GMC Denali truck and a 1994 Lincoln Town Car. Resolution Number 2016-9 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to accept forfeited property pursuant to Superior Court Order 2014 CV 003889-5 for official use by the Police Department, to authorize the chairman or the chief of police as his designee to accept the property on behalf of Clayton County, and to execute any documents necessary, and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. Resolution Number 2016-10 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to accept grant funds for tuition costs for attending national drug coordinator training, and these are grant funds in the amount of $1,000 from the State Justice Institute. Resolution Number 2016-11 is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of one condemned vehicle to be assigned to the Police Department fleet in a manner as will be in the best interest of the county, to authorize the directors of central services and fleet maintenance to perform all acts required by this resolution, and this is for the seizure of a 2001 Dodge Caravan van. Resolution Number 2016-12 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to accept a donation of mattresses on behalf of the Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services Department, to authorize the chairman to accept the donation on behalf of Clayton County, and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. And the final item I have is an order for remission in the matter of State of Georgia versus Jaques Harris and Free at Last bail bonds as a surety in the amount of $20,472.50.
All right, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve.
Is there a second? I'll second it, probably move to second, are there any questions on any other items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
Resolution Number 2016-5 is a resolution providing for the designation of the vice chairman for the Board of Commissioners, to provide for the term of office of the vice chairman, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
I'd like to make a motion that Commissioner Sana Gregory be designated as vice chair, is there a second on it?
I'll second it.
Probably move to second, any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
And finally, Resolution Number 2016-7 is a resolution to establish Clayton County's support of House Bill 646, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion, honor? Guys, due to lack of motion.
Thank you, and we are requesting an executive session for litigation in real estate, briefly.
Thank you.
We have one board appointment this evening, and that's an appointment to the library board to fill the expiring term of LaShonda Dillard. The term is for three years, expiring on February 1, 2019. This is a full board appointment, are there any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reappoint Ms. LaShonda Dillard.
I'll second it, probably move to second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, that does conclude the agenda for this evening, is there any further business? If not, there was a request to go into executive session for litigation and real estate.
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So move your, your.
Second. Probably move to second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you, everyone, enjoy the evening. Motion to reconvene?
Motion to reconvene.
I'll second it, probably move to second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, Ms. Barnes?
Yes, sir. We have Resolution Number 2016-14, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a settlement agreement, settling all claims set forth in the matters involving Brenda P. Allen, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. And Resolution Number 2016-15, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a settlement agreement and general release, settling all claims set forth in the matters involving Marvin Davis, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? I'll second it, probably move to second, any questions on that? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it, probably move to second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have a good evening.
Thank you.